There's nothing. There's nothing we have to vote on right away, so.
Understood, the link just came.
Great. Suzanne, I'm gonna go ahead and let you start with roll call.
Thank you. Mayor LaBar.
Here.
Mayor Proton Keys.
Here.
Councilmember Connors.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Nakai.
Here.
Councilmember Neil. Councilmember Neil, can you just affirm your attendance?
Here. Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Zuluaga.
Here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, this evening, we're gonna start with item three A, and that is our City Woodland Park Police Department Awards Presentation, and Chief Deisler is headed to the podium. Trying to keep up with you.
We will, we're on, very good. Well, good evening, everyone. As always, appreciate everyone of you allowing us the opportunity to come before you and take some time during your meeting to help me and the staff recognize the contributions of our employees and the job that they do for the public every day. Today is actually kind of fun because it's kind of like a dispatch party today. There are no officers getting awards, which is unusual considering the ratio of officers and dispatchers, but tonight, we're bringing four certificates to you, all recognizing some of our dispatchers who are here. I would like to thank not only the dispatchers who are receiving certificates, but also those of you who are on your own time, who have showed up to help support them and to come here and recognize their accomplishments. So, in order to keep us moving in the right direction, I'm gonna go ahead and read each of these one by one, calling them up. I'll have them all stand until we're all done, and if you'd like to take a photograph or two, we'll have that opportunity if that suits you.
Very good.
All right, so without much delay, I'd like to call Brian Bledsoe up to the front. You all might remember, recognize Brian because he's had awards in front of you before, so in this case, Brian being a frequent flyer, I guess is a good thing. So, I'll briefly read to you the certificates we're presenting, and tonight, Brian's getting a Chief's Award of Excellence, and the text in the certificate reads, "In recognition of your exceptional performance on July 29th of this year, when you handled a medical call involving an elderly patient who was having breathing difficulties. During the event, you not only dispatched appropriate EMS and police units, but more importantly, you continued to remain on the phone and used your experienced skillset to go well beyond, simply relying on prepared call cards. Your empathy and calm reassurance helped the patient get the emergency assistance they needed when it mattered most. You are to be commended for your dedication and duty and commitment to excellence with my thanks." And I will tell you that this award was brought forward by one of the officers who he's worked closely with. And to see them recognizing our dispatchers for their work is pretty impressive, because I will tell you that that does not happen in every police department around here. So, I'll have Lieutenant Sanchez present this award to Brian, and I'll come see you guys in a few minutes, and we'll keep this, the show rolling. See, I'm trying to be fast. I complain when it takes too long. All right, so the next dispatcher I'm gonna call up is Lisa Seal. Come on up, Lisa. So, even though Lisa's relatively new to us, she does have some experience, so she came to us recently, and I will tell you, so far has done an amazing job. Right now, she's working on a day shift, so I actually hear her quite a bit on the radio. And it's funny, because Robin's here, and she's training with Robin, and Robin will tell you that I don't, I don't really call in too often to find out what is going on when Lisa's on the radio, so she's doing a heck of a job. But I wanted to present this award to her as well, and I'll read it to you. "In recognition of your exceptional performance on July 27th of this year, when you handled a call involving a possibly suicidal subject who called the department twice within thirty minutes, but provided you few details. During this call, you relied on your experience to attempt to find the subject, but more importantly, you continued to remain on the phone to give your partner valuable time to help locate the person. You are to be commended for your dedication to duty and commitment to excellence. Present this certificate to you with my thanks." And that leads me to the next one, which kind of runs hand in hand with the one I just read, and this is a distinguished service award presented to Amber Hart. Come on up, Amber. So, the one that I just presented to Lisa, if my memory is not failing me, Jen, yeah, and it usually does this time, this call, they actually worked together. So, while Lisa was busy doing her thing on the phone, Amber was in the background running through a myriad of resources that she had at her disposal to help find this person. So, Amber's Distinguished Service Award has actually been presented for two things that she's done. However, since I'm telling you about that, I'll read this portion of the certificate where she helped find a potentially suicidal subject by using all the resources she had in dispatch while her partner Lisa was on the phone to help provide the care to someone in crisis. Again, the second part of this is, "In recognition of her performance and attention to detail on June 20, I'm sorry, June 30th of this year, when she recognized the critical failure of the 911 phone system redundancy." Let me tell you how crazy that is. I have never heard of that ever. And it's because she had the wherewithal to know what was going on in her dispatch center and understood without anyone having to prompt her, why aren't we getting phone calls? And immediately recognized the problem, made a few phone calls, and did some things that she knows how to do, and realized our 911 phone redundancy had gone down. Had she not recognized that, there's no telling how long that condition would have persisted. And I don't know about Jen, but nothing gives me more easier feeling is when our 911 phone went down. Nonetheless, she took immediate action to put processes in place to fix the error and help avert a critical failure of the 911 system that could have kept someone from getting the emergency assistance they need when it mattered the most. Again, folks, these are the things that you see every day out of these, out of these people. It's proactivity and recognizing stuff that needs to happen. If you sit in the chair and you're not plugged in and you're not listening to what's going on, stuff like this goes right over your head. This is clearly not happening in our conference room. So, Amber, you're also a frequent flyer. I'll give you that, that certificate as well. Which brings me to my fourth certificate, Chief's Award of Excellence presented to Robin Lindberg. Come on up, Robin. I was happy, happy to actually be able to slide this one into the presentation tonight, because it did not take long for me to recognize this was a perfect opportunity to do this. When I talked to Jen, I ran it by her, she agreed me 100%. And I will tell you that I don't think I have ever seen anyone in my career who embraces emergency preparedness and man, emergency management like Robin does. This is usually a topic that makes most police administrators nauseated because of the level of attention it takes to make sure things are going on. They know we're getting ready to revamp our entire emergency management plan document. Well, the reason why I'm giving her this award is because she has taken that entire plan document, and I asked her to look at all 147 pages of it. At a preliminary step for me to make sure it was headed in the right direction before I got in there and started making tweaks to it. But because she, it values that work so much and endears herself to it, it's worthy of recognition on multiple levels. But for this, I'll read, "In recognition of your unwavering dedication to emergency preparedness and emergency response efforts, recently helping the preparation of a completely new comprehensive emergency management plan document for the city that will help all of our preparedness in times and manage situations that we may face, whether it be fire, flood, weather, or otherwise. You are to be commended for your dedication to duty and commitment to excellence with my thanks today." And there's the last one. I'll give them all a round of applause before we take pictures.
I just need Eric to promote them. That's the Creek Week. I texted him just now. He sends me pictures of himself. Oh, we're getting for you. Yeah. We'll get him. I have everyone's.
All right, we're off to item three B, and that's your local ambulance. We have challenges and solutions, and we have Captain Daniel Campbell, U. Pass Regional Health Services District presenting for us this evening.
Mayor, council members, I regret to inform you that I'm not Daniel Campbell. You're gonna have to live with me. I'm Dave Hanscher. I'm the Deputy Chief, U. Pass Regional Health Service District. It's been years, I still can't get there, right? As the agenda says, we're coming to you with challenges and solutions. Walk you through a little history. In 2018, we came to the the community and said, you know, hey, we're approaching 3,000 calls a year, and, you know, we're, we're at risk of not being able to provide service for that increase. And in short, we asked for, asked in sales tax. Since then, we have fulfilled the, the promises that we made then. We kept our forests and substation open. We hired more staff. We put on a third ambulance. And we were able to fully open the district resident discount program, which I'll explain if you wish in a few minutes. So, that's been four years ago and COVID, and all of the other things that I don't need to explain to you with inflation and whatnot. Particularly in the medical field, and particularly beyond that, in the emergency medical field, the cost of doing business is, is astronomical. The, for example, in COVID, if you're well aware of the Great American Walkout, that was particularly strong in the healthcare industry. So, finding is very difficult. As such, we're competing with Colorado Springs Fire Department, larger departments around the, the the state, and honestly, other districts that are similar size but have a higher assessed value, and they are, they're stealing all of our, our employees. So staffing is definitely an issue. What we, well, I guess I'll finish this thought. So, wages, medical supplies have gone up 60% since then, and then ambulances, fuel, maintenance is right at 46%. So, those are the, the tip of the challenges that we're facing, and I want to talk about some ways that we have met those challenges already. So, during COVID, there was a lot of needs that really kind of pulled the cover off of a lot of communities, and what they, what was underneath and what the needs really were. And what we found was, is that there was still very much a need for emergency medicine, for an ambulance response. You're sick or injured, we come to you, we stabilize you, we take you to the hospital, and that takes a large degree of expertise, particularly in this area where we might have to travel 40 minutes or an hour just to get to you, and then another two hours back to a major trauma center. During COVID, what we realized is that the need of the community was much broader than that, and nobody was meeting it. The, the, the elderly, marginalized, substance use, the mental health issues that were there, nobody was, you know, able to address them. I'm not saying nobody was addressing them or trying to address them. That would be, that's not true. There's a lot of people that are working really hard. What we found is that we had some expertise, we had some equipment, and we're mobile, and we have the whole infrastructure to help. So, out of that, and in a lot of these programs came to be shortly before COVID, if you've ever heard of community paramedicine or whatnot. But, for example, we're able to take telehealth to people's homes now. So, if they can or don't want to, or really don't need to go to the emergency room, we can come to their house, we draw their labs, we can do all their lab work right in their living room, and then dial up a doc and have a consultation with the emergency room physician and solve the problem. Even if we have to go get them prescriptions and bring them back to them, if they're not able to travel, they don't have a vehicle, et cetera, then we can do that. And not only is that telehealth, which many people have done, but that fourth person there, we call her the fourth person, that's able to take the blood pressure and listen to the lungs and look at the home, et cetera, et cetera. On top of that, we have substance use, we have mental health, and the mental health program, which I will, my, my coworker, my colleague, James McLaughlin, is, would have been here, but he's speaking at a conference in New Orleans. One of about 10 he's done already this year, because he has pioneered the, the mental health program in our district. The mobile mental health and the crisis response program that we've had and that we've developed has been wildly successful, and it's been replicated all over the, all over the country. Back to challenges. Our population is changing. I'm sure you know that probably better than I do. It's getting a little bit older, and the people that live here, just, it's a different demographic. It's not necessarily good or bad. It's just changing. For us, what that means is that demographic shifts. The, the mechanisms of insurance that people have to cover medical bills, especially pre-hospital emergency or mental health emergency bills, is, is limited to, as Medicare and Medicaid makes up 80% of our population, of our interaction with the community. They pay, I don't know, this is not well-known, but they pay pennies on the dollar for an ambulance. Their, their stance is, they pay us for the miles because we transport people. If the community wants excellent professional healthcare, or they want community paramedicine, or they want the cost of readiness that will, you know, we were, we're staged and ready to go so that we're there when you need us, that's on the community. They only pay for the miles we drive. To the tune of, if the, you know, an ambulance bill is $2,500, then Medicare will give us $450, and Medicaid gives us $150. And that's okay if there's only a limited number of people in your community that have that insurance. They're not bad people. They're not a burden on society. They just are in that insurance bracket. So, we have gone to the legislature. We are heavily involved in political advocacy, the local, state, and national level. Chief Tim Deanst is on many committees, knows, you know, spends, that's most of his time, what he spends doing, we are relentless in our pursuit of grants. We are approaching over the last couple of years a million dollars in grants just to keep these programs going. Because all those programs I told you about that aren't bringing people to the hospital, and they're consequently saving millions of dollars of downstream costs. Nobody funds those. Nobody, we can't build Medicare, Medicaid, or insurance companies for that, because they don't, that's not covered benefit. It's too new. They don't understand. Excuse me. We've been able to do these programs and expand and meet this growing need through grants, and most of the grants are startup grants. Very few of them are for sustainability. We've contracted with the, the state. They just changed it, sorry, Behavioral Health Administration. They contract for us to cover some of those services in Teller County. So, we've been able to, we're, we're doing fine. Well, we're not doing fine. We're, we've been able to hold our own to this till now. Here's the solution. Again, I mentioned we've done political advocacy. We are relentless in pursuit of grants. If we're gonna continue to do this, and what, the other thing I might add that we, we discovered is, we're able to meet this need that we discovered pre-COVID, COVID. But every time we find, open, turn over another rock, there's 10 more needs that we are uniquely situated to solve, and we're the cheapest, most efficient, most effective solution for that. So, to maintain that, in addition to the efforts that we have had, we have initiated a ballot initiative, seven A, which is a one cent increase in the, the district sales tax for support of both the ambulance and the expanded programs that we've come to, that we've, we've, we offer. So, I have some more, you know, a few more statistics and numbers. If you're interested, I'm open to questions. That's the gist of it. I want to, I want to point out or clarify what I mentioned earlier about the district resident discount program. What that means essentially is that as part of that sales tax, if you call the ambulance and you then are transported and have a bill, and your insurance company pays 10% of that bill, or whatever percent of that bill, you don't get the rest. We don't balance bill. Anybody that is in the district and pays taxes in the district, they don't, they don't get a bill for that. And that, and that's a chunk of money that we put aside from those taxes to make sure that we're able to give something back. So, we'll continue doing that. The other, the other thing that we're looking for is, it's kind of a convoluted. What we want to do, we're assurance legal. Well, actually, we just found out it is legal. It's the logistics that we're gonna struggle with, but we're gonna try very hard. If Proposition HH does not pass, and our initiative is successful, the increase in property taxes that we would receive, the difference between now and what we would get next year, we're going to rebate. We're gonna, we're not gonna take that. So, in effect, we're gonna lower our mill levy on property taxes to compensate for that, because we know we're asking for more. If everybody in this room, I'm sure, has looked at their property tax statement and is not super happy. So, we don't, we don't want to cause further harm there. So, that's, that's basically it in a nutshell. Seven A is our proposal to maintain the programs that we're operating under right now, and to continue to, continue to expand those. And I'm certainly open for questions if you have any.
Council questions?
Hi, Dave. Thanks for your presentation. I heard a similar one week or so ago. And some, you didn't get to all your facts, but what I heard presented to us was that of the 80% who are on Medicare, there is an outstanding bill that you guys don't collect on, to the tune of about, tell me if I'm wrong, $27 million?
So, it's, those are the two numbers combined for two years. You're, it's supposed 2.1 million this year to date. So, in 2023, it's 2.1 million. Since 2019, when the first sales tax went into effect, it's 15.1 million.
So, that's unrecoverable.
Unrecoverable.
From the, from the Teller County base of folks who utilize your services.
Correct.
The other thing I heard you say, and you, that I heard him say, that I, I think I'm hearing you say as well, is this telemedicine and these sort of services that you're providing, blood work, medications, whatever, saves huge amounts with emergency, emergency care at the hospital, ambulance rides, things like that. So, and if I hear you correctly, you don't get paid for doing it that way, even though you're saving a great deal of money.
Correct. Now, all of those programs that, that allow those savings, we had a presentation today, so I'm, I'm a little more accurate with my numbers, but since, to the, actually, I think it's over the last three years, those alternate programs have had a downstream savings to the medical community, that's patients, communities, hospitals, aftercare, follow-up, health department, all of those things of $2.6 million from just little us in Woodland Park. And it's also the cheapest way to do it. Most, I said, most efficient, most effective, and most economical. The model up until about four or five years ago was, whatever was wrong, you called us, and we didn't have a lot of latitude. We had nowhere else to go, so we took you to the hospital. Most expensive means transportation to the most expensive solution. We can solve that in your living room. We don't have to generate a $5-plus-thousand hospital bill and a $2-plus-thousand ambulance bill. You know, we can, usually, we can solve a lot of those problems in your living room, save you the time and hassle and the expense of going to the hospital, the risk of disease of going to the hospital, and the fact that you might be then turned to a tertiary agency to get, to get those needs met. And the biggest impact, I will say, is our partnership with the Health Department, the Community Partnership, law enforcement is, are particularly, Woodland Park Police Department was our original partner in this experiment years and years ago, specifically for the mental health. Whereas instead of tying somebody down and calling them to the hospital and causing the community to incur a lot of cost, because they, you know, often don't have either good insurance or any insurance, we train, we uptrain. We said, we have mobile people, and they're smart, and they're medically trained. Let's go the extra mile and train them in mental health. And we took several hundred hours of, of trainings and got up to a point to, now, we can not only go to the scene and de-escalate it and see what's going on, but we can offer solutions. Either it's setting them up with counseling, getting an appointment right there, up to, and this is really unheard of. We have admission rights. We have admission privileges to inpatient mental health facilities. We don't have to go to the hospital to get a doctor to say, you need to go to an inpatient psychiatric hospital. We can do that. And we don't do that with an ambulance. We do that with an SUV with one community paramedic who's trained in that, in that field. And that cost is a third of what it would cost to, to take them in an ambulance, and infinitely more effective, so.
Ma'am. Dave, could you explain the logistics of this tax request for a tax increase? Is this one cent? And that would, in the half-cent tax that's in place now, or is this, would this then become one and a half cents on the dollar?
Mayor, council member, it would be one and a half cents on the dollar. It's in addition to.
And is that going to be on the November ballot?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the district, is this a tax for the entire county, or more than one county, or just the city of Woodland Park?
So, this is district-wide, and our district covers portions of four counties. We're primarily in the northern half of Teller County. We do go into Park County. We go into Douglas County a little bit, and by mutual aid, we go into El Paso County.
And this is on goods and services?
Yes.
And who will?
Groceries and prescriptions.
And who would collect and distribute the tax?
Just as it is now. It's the I don't know the answer to that question.
I don't either. I'm curious. I, I thought.
I can certainly get back to you.
Yeah, I, I assumed it was Teller County, but I wasn't certain. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Welcome. Any other questions?
Counsel, anything further?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for giving us that presentation and filling us in.
Yes, good.
Thank you.
All right, we are off to item three C, and it's our Creek Week proclamation, and I believe we have the director on Zoom.
Hi.
Hi, Ally.
Yes. Great. Should I, should I make comments at the beginning here, or how do you want to do this?
Whatever you'd prefer. I have the proclamation in front of me that I can read, and if you would like to just start beforehand and just let us know what Creek Week is and, and how people can get involved, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Ally Shook. I'm the Executive Director of the Fountain Creek Watershed Flood Control and Greenway District, and we are really excited to be here promoting our 10th annual Creek Week cleanup. I started this program 10 years ago as a way to connect our citizens to our home watershed and do a little bit of good for water, which is our really most important resource. And the first year, we had about 600 volunteers come out and removed about six tons of trash, pretty good for, for a first-year effort, and now we're getting volunteers by the thousands. We're planning for about 3,500 volunteers this year, and this is due to our strong partnerships that we've been forming over the years with our local governments, with businesses, schools, churches, and service groups. And over the last nine years, we've engaged 20,000 citizens in removing 140 tons of trash. Okay, that's as much as a blue whale weighs. That's a lot of trash. We're beautifying the natural environment that we all enjoy. We're protecting water quality, and we're preventing storm drains from clogging and wildlife from being injured. And this year, given it's our 10th annual, we want to make the biggest impact yet. So, we really would love to encourage you, our neighbors up in Woodland Park, to join us as you've done in the past. We've got gloves and bags, and, and we'd love to help facilitate a cleanup. I don't know that we've received information on a cleanup that's being held up there. Creek Week runs from Saturday, September 30th through Sunday, October 8th, and so we like to say nine days, no excuses, right? It doesn't take very much to get out there and do a little bit of good for our Right? It doesn't take very much to get out there and do a little bit of good for our waterways. Uh, we also have. Uh, brewed a special beer and you can find that at seventeen different breweries down in Colorado Springs. It's called the impactful IPA. Because what's the number one ingredient in beer? It's water. Uh, so we've got that going and uh, we're doing a few extra projects to. Restore riparian habitats and plant some native um plant species. So um, again, Saturday, September thirtieth. For nine days and we invite all of you to join in on, on a cleanup. Um, if you want to come down to Colorado Springs or. Um, Green Mountain Falls is, is hosting. We have over almost eighty cleanups planned for that timeframe. Um, so just really excited about it. Really appreciate you're all um, being engaged with this in the past and hopefully we can continue that this year.
That's very good. Counsel, do you have any questions before I read the proclamation or?
Ally, hi, this is a Robert Zulawaga, uh, councilman on the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee. For some reason, this year, it seems like this has uh come to us at a really short notice. We did, we did a summer cleanup. Uh, we got about, we had about. It was in the middle of a rainstorm, but we had about fifty volunteers and collected a bunch of trash. So um. I like what you're saying about working with partnerships with schools, et cetera. But we want to get enough in front of this so that the schools, because they plan their calendars a year in advance. We'd like to get it so that they can actually participate in this. Is there a way you can uh put in your notes for Woodland Park? Like, tell us earlier what is going to be like in twenty twenty-four? So that we can actually um get more people up to speed on it.
Sure, yeah. And, and we did have some change in staffing up here, so that might have been part of it is, you know, things, we're just kind of catching up a little bit still, so. Um, yeah, apologize, we didn't get too sooner on this one and we would, we would love to engage with you and. You know, you could do a cleanup anytime. It doesn't have to be during Creek Week and that's great that you guys, I know you always take the, the initiative to do that. Um, so yeah, definitely happy to, to get a little bit uh more ahead of this next year for you.
And so for this year, if there are people within the community who do want to go out that week, are you going to have a drop-off somewhere with bags and whatnot that people can collect them?
Uh, yes.
Mountain Falls the closest.
Um, no, we've got, uh, we have materials and we've got a couple pickup days. Um, and what I can do is I can just put my um, our email in the chat. And folks can just email us. We're happy to coordinate. We have bags, we have gloves, we have grabbers, we have buckets, we have stickers. Um, so we want to get these materials in your hands. If you want to participate in a cleanup, we can facilitate that.
Great, maybe we can get it posted.
Yeah, I'm sure staff can get that posted on our website as well, so that people will have that for information.
Happy tenth.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been great.
All right, I'm going to read the proclamation, so. Hold on, because there's a bunch of warehouses. Proclamation for twenty twenty-three Creek Week, whereas the city of Woodland Park is fortunate to have extensive and diverse natural resources. And whereas the Fountain Creek, excuse me, watershed is a unique and important asset to the residents of and visitors to the city, the Pikes Peak Region. And whereas the Fountain Creek Watershed District is a proud partner and collaborator with its member governments. And whereas the Fountain Creek Watershed District is celebrating the tenth annual Creek Week cleanup. Which offers volunteers the opportunity to protect, steward, and maintain the Fountain Creek watershed. And whereas Creek Week is a litter cleanup, education, and restoration effort throughout the watershed set for. September thirtieth through October eighth, twenty twenty-three, the largest cleanup event in the state of Colorado. And whereas nearly twenty thousand volunteers have removed over one hundred and thirty-five tons of trash during Creek Week over the past nine years. During this impactful program. And whereas Creek Week litter removal and restoration activities will continue to reduce pollution in our creeks and our. Excuse me, connecting waterways, manage flooding, provide for a safer drinking water supply, and enhance wildlife habitat and property values. Now, therefore, the members of Woodland Park City Council, Colorado encourage businesses, churches, schools, nonprofits, neighborhood associations. Youth groups, service clubs, and individuals to form Creek Crews to volunteer their hearts and hands to this effort. We now hereby proclaim September thirtieth through October eighth, twenty twenty-three, as tenth annual Creek Week. In Woodland Park and invite our citizens to help protect, restore, and maintain our waterways by participating in the many activities, programs, and events. Done this twelfth day. For this, the twelfth day of September, twenty twenty-three in Woodland Park, Colorado. And where can they get the beer again?
Seventeen breweries. Check out our website, fountain dash C R K dot org. And uh, yeah, come raise a glass to clean water.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Right, thanks. Appreciate it.
All right, we are off to three D, which is Housing Needs and Assessment Presentation. And this is the presentation on the survey and our presenter is Brian Points with Points Consulting, and I believe he is online as well.
It's actually going to be Pedro today. Brian was unable to make it, but Pedro, you can go ahead. Good evening, everyone. I'm Pedro from Points Consulting. And uh, I will be presenting the slide deck for the survey. So let me share my screen. Is that visible for everybody?
Yes, it is.
Okay, let me start the slideshow. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Pedro Jimenez. I'm an economist with Points Consulting, as well as the Assistant Project Manager for the Woodland Park Housing Needs Assessment. Tonight, we're going to be going over the community survey portion of the project. The survey was closed on August sixteenth. And it covered a wide range of housing-related issues and we've received a pretty strong response rate. So without further ado. Let's get into it.
Excuse me. Pedro, could you please put it on uh, uh, full slide?
Oh, sorry about that. Let me see if I can go ahead and get that up.
Thank you.
Well, uh, like Brian mentioned, I'm traveling today. Don't have my second monitor like I usually do. So I can't, can't show it like this and see my notes, but I think I can do fine just showing the slides. So um. Like I mentioned previously, we closed the survey in August and. I know that my time is limited, so I'm going to just give a brief overview of what's, what's taken place. The project isn't done yet. We're going to be delivering the first draft in October twenty-third. And we're going to be wrapping up the project. Uh, the final version is going to be delivered between. Late November to early December. So you all can expect to see that complete uh by end of year. So the survey got three hundred ninety-seven responses. That was a response rate of four point eight percent. Uh, that's a statistically significant response rate, so that's really strong. Um, it means that we can draw conclusions from that response rate. Um, we promoted it on Facebook and the local newspaper, which helped a lot. Um, this is a timeline of the project so far. The gray bar overlapping the yellow bars is where we are at this point. So um, we're gearing to start the recommendations and strategies portion of the project. Uh, leading up to the comprehensive report and presentation that, as I mentioned previously, is going to be toward the end of the year. Um, so at this point, it's not completed, but we can share some preliminary results. Um. So. Most respondents live in the city. Uh, followed by those in Teller County. Uh, we have over three-quarters of them live in the city. Um, we found that. Hmm, for those that were homeowners, around twenty-nine percent. So the largest people that were homeowners. Uh, were those sixty-five plus. And that went down linearly uh with uh, with age. So younger people were less likely to be homeowners. That's to be expected. So. Most respondents uh reported having trouble finding a house within their budget. Um, around forty-seven percent reported knowing others who had been displaced due to rising housing costs in the past twelve months, in the past year. Most people felt that housing was too expensive in general. Um, and they said this both for homes for rent and homes for sale. Uh, the controversial topic of short-term rentals was a concern for many survey respondents. Um, however, they were split on whether there were too many uh short-term rentals in general. With a little over half saying yes and twenty-six percent saying that, no, there were not too many in town. Um, a lot of survey respondents, the majority, think that too many units are being converted to vacation rentals. And uh, the majority also feel that short-term rentals should be allowed with some restrictions. And we're going to get to that restriction portion. A little bit later in the slide deck. So, like I mentioned previously, most respondents were sixty-five and older. And out of those sixty-five and older, the majority of them are homeowners. Actually, the only cohort that wasn't majority homeowner was the eighteen to twenty-four. So uh, the sample that we got was mostly from homeowners. And most of these homeowners live in single-family homes with their family. Uh, we had a little sliver there that lived alone and basically all the other housing types were quite low in comparison. Uh, where do these survey takers live? So like I mentioned, seventy-six percent live in the city of Woodland Park. A few of them in the county, but outside of city limits. And interestingly, the majority of respondents lived in the city eleven years or more. And uh, that went down by tenure. So the smallest amount that we got was less than one year. So have people been having trouble finding suitable housing within their budget? Yes, that's true for everybody. Sixty-four and under. For those sixty-five and older. Most said that it was within their budget. Um, but when you look at the whole uh. Survey response, in general, people are having trouble finding uh suitable housing within their budget. And like I mentioned, a lot of people knew somebody that had been displaced from their home. Uh, due to rising housing costs, so that means they had to move somewhere else. They couldn't afford the rent. They couldn't afford the mortgage. So. That has been a bit of a common occurrence. Um, like I mentioned also previously, both rental costs and purchase costs for all housing types. Uh, respondents found too expensive. Most respondents that live in the county but outside of city limits are not currently looking to move. Uh, that's seventy-seven percent of them. Uh, the longer a respondent has lived in the city and those of middle duration, so six to ten years. Uh, those are the least likely to be looking to move. So those, those people are pretty settled and in place. Uh, but there are some newcomers that are interested to moving into Woodland Park. And a little later, we'll see the reasons they may be interested in moving to Woodland Park. So uh, those that did want to move. Uh, sorry, so no desire to move, like I mentioned, seventy-seven percent. Four percent of those uh respondents live outside of uh, Teller County, but visit the city of Woodland Park regularly. So uh, these are people commuting from outside of the area. Uh, which the survey did pick up some of those people. Now, um. What, what are people dissatisfied with in terms of housing in the city? Number one answer, existing homes are too expensive or difficult uh to fix up. That followed by that is too many houses are being transformed to vacation rentals. And number three, not enough ha- types of homes, not enough homes in general for people. And so a shortage of housing supply, top three complaints by far. Um, so what other housing aspects are people um dissatisfied with? This was picked up by. People that entered their own custom responses. Some people said uh, the wrong type of housing is being built. They want to see different types of houses being built in different places. Um, a handful of complaints for Charis Bible College. We heard these when we were there in, in-person interviews. And a lot of people mentioned the free market, a free market in housing. They want to see less regulation. Um, and we'll see that in responses further on the, in the presentation. So what should the local government's role be in um regulating the housing market? Um, a free market. So uh, most people want to see a hands-off approach and let the market regulate itself. They don't want to see any intervention. Uh, however, twenty-eight percent said that they would like the local government, so the city government, to have a more active role. So um, what should be done in relation to short-term rentals? Uh, most respondents think that they should be allowed, but they should be allowed with regulations and restrictions. Um, we purposely left this answer broad. We just called them regulations. We didn't want to get too technical, bogged down the survey. Uh, with technical language that could confuse some people. Uh, but we are going to get into the details of regulations in the actual report and the recommendations. So. Uh, that's still to come. Um, it's also noteworthy that around twenty point seven percent of respondents said that they should be banned altogether. So um. Good amount of people don't want to see them at all. Uh, but when asked, where, where are these short-term rentals that some people feel there are too many of? Where are they located? Um, most people aren't sure. Yeah, oh, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. When asked how ma- if there are too many short-term rentals, most people said yes. However, where are these short-term rentals are being a problem? Most people said that they aren't sure. Um, fifty point nine percent to be exact. Um, but the people that did specify certain areas where they thought short-term rentals were a problem. Residential neighborhoods. Uh, everywhere within city limits and specific zone districts. Also, five percent of respondents said that short-term rentals were a problem everywhere in the city. So when asked if the housing stock should increase within the city. Um, interestingly, most respondents said that, no, they don't want to see the housing stock increase. But a close number of people said that they would like to see it increased with a mix of both single-family and dense housing options. When people were asked what tools they would like to see the city use to increase the housing stock. Um, number one was incentives for remodeling and redeveloping uh the housing stock. Number two was changes into the zoning code to allow for different types um and a mixture of housing types. And number three was ADUs, just ADUs in general. So. When people discussed, uh, again, when people discuss tools. Number one, free market. People don't really want to discuss tools. They just want the housing market to regulate itself. We saw this in Facebook comments also as well. So that's a running theme and something to keep in mind. Um, when discussing regulations in the city. Now, this next set of questions, we asked. Um, specific housing types. So. Where do you want to see large lot, uh, single-family neighborhoods? Uh, where do you want to see, for example, townhomes? Where do you want to see ADUs? Uh, where do you want to see apartments? And people could choose if they want to see them in multifamily neighborhoods. Historic moderate-density areas of everywhere or nowhere. In the case of townhomes, uh, most people want to see them on or behind commercial corridors. Some want to see them in low-density multifamily housing neighborhoods and uh, a good amount also said high-density apartment complexes. Um, the people that have lived in the city between six to ten years are the most approving of townhomes. Um, however, for all cohorts of people that have lived in the city. Um, most of them aren't likely to choose everywhere. So most people don't want to see townhomes everywhere in the city. Um. So for the duplex and triplex housing type. Uh, most people want to see them in low-density multifamily housing neighborhoods. Also in areas on or just behind commercial corridors. Or in areas with apartment complexes. So. This mirrors pretty closely what, what they want to see for townhomes. Uh, the people that have lived in the city the longest are the most permissive of this housing type. Um, and the people that have lived here the shortest are most likely to want to see this housing type everywhere in the city. So uh, what about cottage neighborhood housing types? Uh, people want to see those in low-density multifamily. Close to commercial corridors. And this is interesting, number three, nowhere. So this is not a very popular housing choice for survey takers. Uh. Those that do want to see them would rather see them in moderate, single-family areas. Uh, but there is just not a general comfort level, it seems, for cottage neighborhoods in Woodland Park. Um. For apartments. People said, the majority of people said nowhere. Or on areas just behind commercial corridors or in areas for high-density, high amenity, multifamily. Or on areas just behind commercial corridors or in areas for high density, high amenity, multifamily housing. Um, this shows us that residents of all tenure levels are tighter on density standards when it comes to multifamily. Um, people that have lived there the least amount of time are most comfortable. They want to see them everywhere. However, people that have lived there the most amount of time, they're not very comfortable with seeing apartments in the city. And it's almost the exact same situation with condos, owner owned condos. Most people don't want to see them anywhere. Um, people that have lived there one to five years voted everywhere. They're comfortable with condos. Um. And interestingly, the people that have lived there eleven years or more. They also don't want to see them, but the people that do want to see them are comfortable with them in low density districts for owner occupied condos. Uh, the case of ADUs, which were mentioned, uh, previously. And one of the tools for increasing housing, people would be okay seeing those in large lot, single family neighborhoods. In moderate sized, single family neighborhoods, and in third place, nowhere, closely followed by everywhere. So a mixed response on that one. Uh, ADUs receive the highest interest ratings from residents of all of the middle housing density types. The longest tenure residents are likely to select everywhere for ADUs, which, which is interesting. And the shortest tenure residents, uh, which were those in the one to five years category. Uh, are in favor of ADUs in lower and mixed density areas. When asked about additional thoughts, just in general on housing in the city. Unsurprisingly, short term rentals, which has been contentious, have come out on top. Uh, affordability for local workers, anything to do with workforce housing was mentioned heavily as well. And just the need for different housing types aside from single family housing was the third response. So what's next for this project outside of the survey? Um, we're going to leverage the insights from this community survey. And we're going to put together strategies and recommendations that are aimed to help. Um, housing affordability and choices currently in the city, and these are going to be incorporated into the report. Um, and should be ready by late November, early December. And will be incorporated in the final report for January. Um, we're also going to continue to advance the actual report. Including an analysis of affordability gaps. We're also doing a housing needs forecast that's going to span the next seventeen years until twenty forty. And we're going to deliver the comprehensive housing, uh, draft report on October twenty third to the city. Followed by a final report and presentation occurring between late November and early December, like I mentioned. So that is all that I have as far as the. Survey.
Do you have any questions or comments then? No, all right.
Yeah, I, I do have one question.
Okay.
Um. Pedro, um, what have you done as you collected the data to, um. Filter out folks who wanted to create a bias? I have heard of some who would, who have submitted up to forty different responses. Do you have a way of seeing that? Do you have a way of calling that out? Or did you, or is that just part of the problem?
Yeah, so, um, our rule was fifty percent or less quen- questions that were answered with no open ended responses. And identical survey responses, uh, with similar or no open ended response additions. These were marked as people that just took them without thinking. Um, we can see how long it took somebody to answer the survey. Somebody finished the survey in one minute. We know that that's not a legitimate response.
Thank you.
All right. Well, Pedro, thank you for your presentation on that. It gives us some stuff to think about and, uh, we look forward to having. Um, your further results presented to us in the future here, so.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thanks a lot. All right, we're on the. Item E, and that is a recap. And thank you to the city of Woodland Park and our presenter is, I believe Jim Weir's here.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to try to follow the chief's lead and plow through this quick, okay? Um, Mayor LaBarre Council, thank you in advance for your time and attention this evening. And thank you to City Council, Department Heads, and all the various entities that made this year's Veterans Event huge success. We had zero police issues, zero fire medical issues, and A plus report back from the school district. Uh, Teller County Sheriff's Office, Colorado State Patrol, Public Works, Memorial Park Staff. And had only one citizen complaint that was relayed directly to our staff regarding the road closures, which we worked to resolve as quickly as possible. On behalf of the Rally Committee, I cannot express how very grateful we are for the many entities who provided the required infrastructural support. Which is so crucial to the success of the event. This is truly a team effort, and while the event organizers usually receive the lion's share of the media attention. We would be nothing and have nothing without the support of the city and county departments and staff who so generously dedicate their time and attention to the cause. Specifically, we'd like to thank Suzanne and her staff at the City Clerk's Office. Uh, Steve Varner and his crew at Park and Rec. Uh, Chief Dysler and Lieutenant Sanchez at Woodland Park PD. Uh, Phil Piles at Public Works, Jason Ferris and Vince Tripp over at the School District. Uh, Chief Lambert and Deputy Chief Ryle at Netco. Uh, Teller County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Mike Sol and Lieutenant Bunding. Uh, Captain Hopean at Colorado State Patrol, Southwest Teller County Emergency Medical Services Staff, and of course. Woodland Park City Council. To whom we have, uh, brought this plaque up and. Uh, Kelly Case, Councilwoman Case, spent so much time, uh, on point. With us on the phone, et cetera. We also brought her one of these as well.
Thank you, Jim. It's very thoughtful.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. You're a sweetheart.
We're also happy to report by all accounts that this year it was mission accomplished again. With an A plus rating from all those who provided feedback in our quest to honor our United States military veterans and their service. To recognize and remember those who could not be with us. And to create a venue where our veterans could gather, share camaraderie and help each other heal. And to provide a very positive experience for all those who attended, both veteran and civilian. Taking stock of the license plates at the high school, the middle school and Memorial Park. We recorded over four thousand out of area visitors from fifteen different states and nearly every county in Colorado. That was just a sampling and was not a constant monitoring. Uh, breaking down the three separate activities very briefly. The POW MIA Recognition Ride celebrated thirty six years continuous on August nineteenth. More than eight hundred motorcycles and a thousand people participated, and there was not a single issue in the execution of the ride. Again, we are extremely grateful for the outstanding support provided by the city of Woodland Park and Teller County. Which has been so generously provided for more than twenty five of those thirty six years for the ride. While the recognition ride does not rest he- does rest heavily on infrastructural support provided by the city and county. It does not require any hard cash contributions from the city as there is an admission fee to participate. Having said that, we are extremely grateful for the thousand dollar contribution from the Signature Events Fund. And wanted to report that that money was used directly to pay the Colorado State Patrol for the permit to close Highway twenty four. And for the two trooper, two car escort for the ride. None of the city's cash contributions was retain- were retained by the event organizers. We're happy to report that the POW MIA Recognition Ride is very healthy and we see that ride continuing on in perpetuity. For as long as the city of Woodland Park and the school district want to support the effort. Finally, we wanted to let council know that we are in the process of transferring ownership and control of the ride. To the Veterans for Veterans Organization, a longstanding local nonprofit group who helps homeless veterans in Teller County and El Paso County. Find housing, jobs, and provides needed items to help get our homeless vets off the street. All residual proceeds from the ride went to Vets for Vets Organization, and again, event organizers retained zero dollars. The Vietnam Veterans Memorial Traveling Wall celebrated its fifteenth appearance at this year's event, making this the longest standing host. For the wall in the state of Colorado. The city's contribution of two thousand dollars from the Signature Events Fund was very timely indeed. As our local business sponsorship dollars were substantially down for twenty twenty two. The city's contribution went directly to the American Veterans Traveling Tribute Organization, the owners of the wall. And none of the city's cast contribution was retained by the event organizers. Um, I, I wanted to also impart that. The reason we've had the wall the last two years is because we had a, a private citizen. Uh, contact us after twenty twenty one and say. Look, you know, I always go to the wall in Cripple Creek. Why didn't you have it this year? And, you know, we explained to them it was strictly a matter of mine. So, how much does it cost? Well, it costs about twelve grand by the time you're done. Well, how about if I give you ten grand? Okay, so we chose to split that gift from one citizen. Uh, it for two years to be able to bring the wall in. And, uh, we used five thousand of it last year and fundraised the rest. And then we did five thousand this year and fundraised the rest. Well, that resource is gone. So, uh, at this point, we have to tell council that the traveling wall will not appear at next year's event. Finally, uh, the Salute to American Veterans Rally, which is comprised of all the activities you see in Memorial Park next door here. Celebrated thirty one years on August eighteenth and nineteenth. And again, our mission to create a great experience for our veterans hit a home run. We had perfect weather. Everything went off without a hitch. The Rally Committee was honored to design, produce and donate the first Purple Heart Community sign to the city of Woodland Park. And we were humbled to hear that that effort is being supported and expanded by both the city and the county as we speak. We were also honored to embellish the Veterans Memorial in the park with two new bronze plaques dedicated to the veterans, uh, of the War of Afghanistan. And the thirteen victims of the bombing in Kabul during the failed departure from Afghanistan. The cost on these two beautiful plaques was in excess of twenty five hundred dollars. And we wanted to advise council that the two thousand dollar contribution from the Signature Events Fund. Went to pay the foundry for that portion of the invoice for those plaques. Again, none of cities, none of the city's cash contribution was retained by the event organizers. We'd like to again express our gratitude, uh, for the three cash contributions made by the city, which were right on time. As just before we got the news from City Hall about those gifts. We were notified that one of our longstanding sponsors, who annually contributed five thousand dollars, was ceasing all event sponsorships for twenty twenty three. Due to a loss in business revenue. So you kept us even and we could not be more grateful. While the fundraising efforts did, our fundraising efforts at the rally did not meet the rally committee's expectations. We were able to donate about twelve hundred dollars to the Colorado War Dog Memorial. And the Hurricane Heroes Organizations, both of whom care for retired military service dogs in their twilight years. The Red Friday Shirt giveaway remains very popular and all eight hundred of these Support Our Troop shirts were given away. But this was the first time since we started the program in two thousand seven that we were unable to generate any proceeds. Uh, to donate to local veterans. The two deciding factors here were an increase in the price of the garments. And a lack of disposable income held by attendees as a result of what has happened with the price of essentials like food and fuel. Over the past year. Typically, we sell a lot of those Red Friday shirts to folks who come and get their free one per customer shirt. But this year we had almost none of that and just broke even at the end of the day. The silent auction was also an unsuccessful fundraiser for the first time ever. As only two of the four items met reserve and the two high bidders on the oil painting both dropped out and failed to honor their bids and pay. Uh, when the event was closed. Uh, those items will be held over for next year's silent auction and we will hopefully have better luck. While we do not want to dwell on the downside of this year's event, it bears mention that the official rally merchandise sales were substantially down again. Uh, this year, even with the great weather and the improved attendance. Beer sales were also very slow for the nonprofit that ran the beer garden. Again, the attendees' lack of disposable income as a result of across the board inflation and our own increased costs for everything. Especially the merchandise made for lackluster sales. And as most here understand, the sales of the rally merchandise is our one and only revenue stream for pro promotions. As all other funds realized from this event are donated back to veterans and veteran organizations. We've come up with several measures that we plan to put in place to reduce expenses next year, including not printing the official program, which you have in front of you. And making that available online only, reducing staff. Uh, producing much less rally merchandise and eliminating the aircraft flyovers from the ceremony. After four years now, financial failure for the rally portion of Veterans Event, twenty twenty four may unfortunately be our last rally here in Woodland Park. Unless we can somehow garner some additional financial support in the form of sponsorship from the city, county, or some private entity. In early July, we were contacted by a representative of the United States Army's First Battalion, five hundred and sixth Infantry Group. Who served in Korea and Iraq, who is organizing their twentieth anniversary gathering. Uh, we came to an agreement with the host group of three to four hundred soldiers and their families. With a specific plan to attend the Saturday ceremony at the rally and be recognized and honored for their service. We, uh, all of these folks are from out of area. All will be staying multiple days before and after the rally. And with that agreed upon arrangement in mind, we are committed to organize and execute the rally in twenty twenty four. If the city of Woodland Park will have us back. Again, many thanks to the city, to Teller County for your outstanding support, City Council. And, uh, everything you did for the POW MIA Recognition Ride, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Traveling Wall, and the Salute to American Veterans Rally. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. Thank you, Jim. All right, off to item four, additions, deletions, or corrections to agenda. We have none. And five consent calendar. Council, I'm thinking you guys are going to want to consider these items individually.
Please.
Um, and we'll start with item A, consideration of ordinance fourteen sixty, that's extending a temporary moratorium. And our city attorney Jeff Wilson is going to present that for us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, as you've seen in the, uh, packet, the. Uh, this is a proposal to extend the moratorium for several months after the election in order to deal with whatever happens at the election. If the matter is successful, we will have a bunch of rulemaking to do. Better is not successful, we'll have a bunch of rulemaking to do, so. This, uh, this, uh, moratorium will give us time to do that in either eventuality.
Council, any questions or comments for Jeff? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to extend the moratorium till April first of twenty twenty four.
And set the public.
And set the public hearing. October the fifth, twenty twenty three.
I'll second.
Suzanne, this is Rusty. Yes.
Okay, thank you, Rusty.
And Rusty, when I ask for questions or comments, just cut in if I forget to include you.
I'm waiting.
Yeah, we'll do. We'll do. Thank you.
I don't, it's not showing on my screen. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
It, it disappeared off my screen, but yes.
Thank you. Council, thank you. Motion is passed unanimously.
Okay, very good. Off to item B, we have consideration of ordinance fourteen fifty nine and the, we have. Uh, Councilmember Zuluwaka and Connors as presenters.
Great, I'll, I'll take it to start bringing people into it. Okay. So I want to, uh, put some perspective on this. Uh, this didn't get, uh, uh, an opportunity to see why we've brought this to council. Um, it, it's very timely. It's actually everything that Jeff and Nina put together in fourteen fifty five. That's just deals with Title Five. And so all the languaging in it is exactly, uh, what Jeff and Nina have prepared, except for three additional. Uh, sentences. And, uh, so if you want to know what those are, um, the first one is on page nine, well, they're all on page nine, actually, of your packet. For, uh, for homeowners who reside per- uh, permanently in their residence, under that same roof. Licensed and operated as a prime, primary resident, short terminal, they're exempt from paying a lodging business tax. The second one is down in, on section A of five point two two oh two oh. And it says, in no case shall the penalty for operating without a license.
And it says, in no case shall the penalty for operating without a license be less than ten thousand dollars. And the, and the logic of that is we don't want to burden staff. As we look at regulating short-term rentals, we want to make it pay for itself. And so we, if the penalty is strong enough, it will make the need of enforcement less in terms of city staff. And the last change is on C, proof of liability insurance with a minimum of five hundred thousand dollars is required prior to issuance of a short-term rental business license. So the purpose in conclusion is that if we put this in place, whether the citizens' vote in December is successful or not, we've set into place good neighbor policy, all the things that were in fourteen fifty-five that have to do with Title V. It expedites it for staff to go ahead and get pieces in place for, in that first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four. It puts all the pieces in place and it's the streamlined process. So if we keep Title eighteen separate from five, it's a simple process. And then citizens have the opportunity for whatever's on the ballot to make that decision that fills a Title eighteen and we can all move forward simply. Did you want to add something else, Frank?
No, thank you. That was a good summary. I appreciate it.
Mayor, I have a question of the attorney, if I can, and he may be able to insert now or not, but from my experience with administering the sales tax code for the city for many years, I, I just ask that it seems to me that exempting someone from the collection of lodging tax is discriminatory and I'm not sure that we can discriminate that way on the imposition of a tax. And my memory is not as good as it used to be, but I just asked that question.
Well, I haven't burrowed into the details of this proposal, but it would depend on the basis for the exemption. Like if the exemption is based on geography, you can have dormant commerce clause problems. The exemption is based on some other reasons. You can have various income tax and other kinds of tax authority questions or taper issues. But it depends on the nature of the discrimination that's involved.
Okay. It just would be something that would need some legal looksee to make sure that that's something that's, that is something that can be done.
I'd be happy to look at it.
So Jeff, just on the, the, what's behind that is the, once again, the intention to keep government out of private homes. And if somebody's renting a room to somebody on the short-term rental and they live there, that's not something that we want the government involved in. That's a totally different situation when somebody's running it as a.
And that kind of distinction may have no legal implications at all.
That's what I'm thinking.
You know, I just, I didn't want to say it having not looked at it.
Right, okay.
And just one more question. Has legal, has legal, the attorney's office reviewed this ordinance?
We have not.
Thank you.
But it is all your work, except for everything Title eighteen is removed from it. So, yeah.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, can I get a motion?
Yes, so Frank, do you want to make the motion or I will?
I'll make the motion. Make a motion to, for consideration of ordinance number fourteen fifty-nine, series two thousand and twenty-three, and initial posting. In ordinance of the City Council of City Woodland Park, Colorado, amending Title V of the Woodland Park Municipal Code Concerning Business Regulations to License and Regulate Short-Term Rentals and Set the Public Hearing for October fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
One second.
I'll second it.
Council, any votes?
Suzanne, this is Rusty. No.
Thank you.
Did it go through, Sues?
I'm just waiting. Councilmember Connors.
My vote is yes, but it's not on my screen.
Thank you. So counsel, motion has failed four to three with LaBarre, Case, Neil, and Harvey voting no.
Okay. Or after item C, approval of the August twenty-third statement of expenditures. And Erin, are you?
I'm sorry?
For item C, for the statement of expenditures.
Yes, we have the statement of expenditures for the month of August.
Okay. Council, were there any questions about that or? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the statement of expenditures for August twenty twenty-three. I'll second.
Council, you may vote if those that can. That's what I'm going to say for now.
Suzanne, this is Councilmember Neil. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Suzanne, it disappeared from my screen again. So, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Now we are on to item six, public comment on items not on the agenda. And Suzanne, do you have anyone signed up for that?
I do. This evening, our first speaker is Arnie Sparnins. Okay. Okay. Our second speaker is Debbie Miller.
Okay.
Good evening, counsel. I typically stand before you sharing my extemporious dialogue, but tonight I have the privilege of presenting a prepared statement. The chamber is abuzz with excitement as we prepare for not one, but two significant events in the upcoming weeks. First on our calendar is the Eggs and Issues Breakfast, a remarkable gathering where we will have the honor of hosting our esteemed District Severn Congresswoman Brittany Peterson. She will delve into the critical issues unfolding in our nation's capital, like government shutdown, and shed light on the impactful incentives she's diligently pursuing within her district, which notably includes Teller County. Mark your calendars for Thursday, October fifth, at the U-Pass Cultural Center. The day begins with registration at seven thirty a.m., followed by a delightful breakfast at eight a.m. Our distinguished guests will take the stage around eight twenty-five a.m. The cost to attend this event is thirty dollars. You can conveniently register through the Chamber's website. As if that were not enough excitement, we have another major event in store for you. The Chamber's Woodland Park RE Two Candidate Forum, it's slated for Monday, October ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. In anticipation of a large turnout, we've made the prudent decision to relocate the forum from its usual venue here in Council Chamber to the U-Pass Cultural Center, a move that was strategically planned months ago. As a side note, we're already in discussions with city staff to secure a date for the city election candidates forum we'll be hosting next year. For the School Board Forum, the doors will swing wide open at four forty-five p.m. with the forum kicking off promptly at five thirty. To ensure this is informative event reaches a wider audience, we've engaged a professional media company to capture every moment and we aim to have the recorded event available on our website for distribution as early as the following day. It's impossible for us to predict how many will attend to hear the Chamber's mission, which is clear that evening, and that's to educate and inform the voters who will soon recently, who will soon cast their ballots for candidates vying for the RE Two School District. Recently, I had the pleasure of sending an email to our Chamber membership, offering them a detailed history of our candidates forum. Over the course of my nineteen-year tenure as President of the Chamber, we've orchestrated a multitude of forums spanning federal, state, and local elections. Furthermore, we've been fortunate to collaborate with four different moderators who have consistently demonstrated the utmost integrity and respect for all participating candidates. Our moderators bear the responsibility of asking questions and ensuring the evening's logistics flow seamlessly. They also oversee the equitable distribution of opening and closing statements, along with providing opportunities for candidates to engage in meaningful rebuttals. As a testament to our commitment to progress, we've even incorporated a computer-generated timer into our proceedings. This is my favorite, though. Probably won't be using that.
Can I borrow that?
You've all, you've all been a part of a forum where we've used this and it's, it's so good. Anyway, in conclusion, I really want to express my personal appreciation, appreciation to each, each of you up on the dais for affording the citizens in Woodland Park and the surrounding regions the opportunity to address issues that matter to them. Even if this falls outside of your formal agenda, you have number six on your agenda that allows them to do that. Over the years, we've heard impassioned voices on topics ranging from water concerns, wild animal concerns, something about deer, to STR issues, and we've received valuable insights recently from students, parents, teachers, and administrators on matters close to their hearts. Mayor, your leadership in embracing these voice, these voices is very praiseworthy. And counsel, your attentive listening speaks volumes. Sometimes, the simple act of giving a voice to those with differing opinions demonstrates that an organization or a government's entity's commitment to truly hearing its people. Thank you, and we look forward to a resounding attendance at our Eggs and Issues Breakfast on October fifth at our Woodland Park RE Two School Board Forum, and we invite each of you personally to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for hosting those as well.
The next speaker is Sharon Richardson. Thank you.
Good evening, council members.
Just got to get right in there.
Right in there, okay. My name is Sharon Richardson. I'm a citizen of the city. Victory Life Church has a community impact team and their mission is to educate and activate the Woodland Park community on civil matters. Deanne Betterman is in charge of that team. She is not here this evening. And what better time to reach out to the community than now, we understand that the Chamber is having their school board forum. And the Victory Life Community Impact Team is also offering the community an opportunity to attend a second School Board Forum on October second, and that will be held at the Woodland Park High School Auditorium at six p.m. We want to make it clear that in no way is this forum competing with the Chamber's forum. There are many issues facing the election and we want the Woodland Park School District voters to have ample opportunity to be as educated as possible before casting their vote. This is a public invitation to all six candidates, voters, Woodland Park, city council members, and members of the, the Chamber and county commissioners to this nonpartisan, non-biased event. And we're excited to announce that Senator Mark Basely has made himself available to moderate this event. We have several Woodland Park business endorsements, endorsements on the flyer. There's only three listed, but we have many, many more on an updated flyer. And for the citizens here, there are more flyers in the back on the table. So we look forward to this most needed opportunity to educate and activate our voters. So thank you very much.
Thank you. The final person that I have. Signed up is Kitten Walker.
Thank you. So I would like to address an issue that is going around about the Victory Life Community Impact Team Forum on social media. It's saying that how can we be non-biased if we're, have a relationship with Charis Bible College? And I just wanted to address that. So I want to talk about our Chamber of Commerce and their relationship with Charis in contrast with Victory Life relationship with Charis. So I have seen the Chamber of Commerce President Deb Miller on the stage at Charis the first week of school welcoming the students and giving them direction, you know, on good behavior for our city. And I've seen our Chamber of Commerce President Deb Miller at conferences welcoming people into our town. And I've also seen our Chamber of Commerce President Deb Miller in the third-year business class, watching the students give their business presentations. And my opinion is that this shows a very good relationship between our Chamber of Commerce, our Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce, and Charis Bible College, which is a good thing. We want good relationships, right? So the fact that the Chamber of Commerce is hosting an RE Two School Board Forum and has this relationship with Charis, in my opinion again, tells me that our Chamber of Commerce President Deb Miller does not see a conflict with, with the relationship with Charis. And I absolutely agree with that. And so going back to the Victory Life RE Two School Board Forum on October second, yes, Victory Life Church does meet in the Charis Bible College Auditorium until they get their own building built, but in no way does this mean that the Victory Life Community Impact Team has a conflict with hosting a forum. Our mission is to educate and activate our community. And there's always more to learn, so we feel like another forum is appropriate. And before I close, I would like to respectfully ask that our Chamber's president to have an opportunity to come up and correct me if I've been wrong in any of this and any of my statements. And so as usual, I'm going to do I have one minute? Okay. Okay, I just want to say First Annual twelve sixteen says, "Stand and watch and see with your eyes the great thing the Lord is going to do." In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you. Okay, Suzanne, do you have anyone else signed up?
No, ma'am. That concludes public.
Okay, very good. All right, we have no unfinished business. No ordinances on initial posting. No public hearing. Soft to new business. We have ten A, which is approval of subdivision development agreement, The Grove at Spruce Haven. And Karen is our presenter for that.
Good evening. This is a request for city council to authorize a subdivision development agreement. This is for a townhome project known as The Grove at Spruce Haven. It was approved by Order fourteen twenty-four, series two thousand and twenty-two, back in July of two thousand and twenty-two. The final plot, since it was a townhome plot, was administratively processed and approved. The final plot, since it's a townhome plot, was administratively processed and approved in July of this year. You may recall that this particular proposal is located, or this project is located north of Tractor Supply, and the overall address for the parcel is 920 Spruce Haven Drive. This consists of six two-unit attached single-family dwellings on 2.18 acres. The developer has begun installing all the required infrastructure, and in the near future, they want to obtain building permits for the individual dwelling units. Since all of that infrastructure is not in place, we do need a subdivision development agreement, along with financial guarantee for that outstanding infrastructure. In this case, that infrastructure is primarily storm system improvements and private roadway in terms of what's remaining. As always, it's at the city's discretion as to whether or not to enter into this contract. And so in your packet, there was a copy of that proposed SDA for your consideration. And the numbers associated with the outstanding improvements have been reviewed and approved by the city engineer. They need to provide a, a financial guarantee of either a cash escrow, irrevocable letter of credit, or bond. In this particular case, they have bonding in place. And there is a little bit of difference in this agreement from other ones you've seen recently in that there are two signing parties on behalf of the developer, partly because it's, the, the name on the financial guarantee is Johnson Constructors LLC, who is the contractor doing the work. And then the developer who owns the land and doing the project is 920 Spruce Haven LLC. I did have the contract reviewed by City Attorney Nina Williams, and she is comfortable with what's in the packet for you this evening. And so with that, staff's recommendation is to approve the subdivision development agreement for The Grove at Spruce Haven as presented, with the requirement that the SDA must be recorded after the financial guarantee is provided to the city. And then also, a representative from the developer, Erin Obering, is here if you have questions for her.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments for Karen? Do you have any questions or comments for the applicant? Very good. Let's go ahead and get a motion then, please.
I'll move to approve the subdivision development agreement for The Grove at Spruce Haven as presented.
I'll second.
I don't know of any amendment or stipulation. Do I need anything else in the motion, Karen? Is that written in the development agreement? I think it is. Just to be, just to be fully, that the SBA is recorded after the receipt of the bond for the improvements.
And I'll second again. Thank you, Robert.
Okay, counsel, you may vote.
Suzanne, this is Councilmember Neil. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously.
Very good. We're off to 10B Citizens Initiative Petition Results and Steps Moving Forward, and our city clerk Suzanne is presenting that.
Thank you, Mayor. As counsel is aware, on August 21st, the city clerk's office received a Citizens Initiative petition regarding an ordinance of the citizens of Woodland Park for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, amending Title 18 of the Woodland Park Municipal Code concerning zoning districts where short-term rentals are allowed to be licensed and operated within the city limits of Woodland Park, Colorado. This petition contained 1,438 signatures. The requirements for this petition to be successful were 1,018 signatures, which was equal to 15% of the voters in the city of Woodland Park. This past Tuesday, I officially certified this petition as being sufficient. I certified 1,345 signatures. Only needing 1,018 signatures, the petitioners had 327 more signatures than needed. As counsel also is aware, as per Colo, as per Colorado State Statute 3111110, within 40 days after an initiative petition is filed, which was August 21st, a protest in writing under oath may be filed in the office of the city clerk by any registered elector who resides in the municipality, setting forth specifically the grounds for such protest. The protest period for this petition will end on September 29th, 2023. Again, sorry for all the statute quotes, but I gotta do it. As per State Statute 3111104 regarding initiative petitions, the proposed ordinance may be adopted without alteration by the legislative body within 20 days following the final determination of petition sufficiency. If not adopted by the legislative body, which is you guys, the legislative body shall refer the proposed ordinance petitioned for to the registered voters for a special election. The dates of this election must be between 60 and 150 days of the certification of the petition. If counsel desires for this to go to a special election, I am recommending the date of December 12th. This date meets the criteria as put forth in State Statute. It also won't interfere or confuse the voters with the upcoming regularly scheduled election in April. Following the work session this evening and consences from the council, I will bring forth on October 5th a resolution announcing the election date of December 12th and the ballot question to be on the ballot. As you all know, this evening, the council will be discussing whether or not there will be other questions to add to this ballot. As per the same state statute as quoted above, if its council's desire, alternative ordinances may be submitted at the same election. And if two or more conflicting measures are approved by the people, the one that receives the greatest number of affirmative votes shall be adopted in all particulars as to which there is a conflict. We look forward to discussing this with the council later on this evening at the work session immediately following this council meeting. Are there any immediate questions I can answer? Okay, more to talk about later then. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you, Suzanne, for your hard work in getting all that done.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Off to item C, council discussion on mill levy, and Erin is going to present that for us.
All right, thank you. I felt it was necessary to have another discussion on the mill levy.
Excuse me, just, I just saw, I'm sorry, Erin. Councilmember Neil has his hand up, and I don't know if it's about what we just spoke about. Rusty? Did you have something to say, Councilmember Neil?
I, I had lost the connection. I was trying to get promoted to panelist, and I have now been promoted. That's all I was trying to do.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right. I felt it was necessary to have another discussion on the mill levy based on the meeting that's going to be taking place on September 27th at the U-Pass Cultural Center at 6:00 PM, with the county and the city co-hosting it. There's going to be a meeting with the public officials. I believe Senator Basely is going to be there giving an update on Senate Bill 23-108. And so I wanted to give an update based on how Proposition HH, otherwise known as Senate Bill 23-303, could affect the city's property tax revenue if it passes in November. So, sorry about that. Let me pull my presentation up. All right, that would help. Okay, does counsel wish to go back over the ones we reviewed at the budget work session, or would you like to jump right to the, the update? Right to the update, okay. So on the bottom of page three of your handout, skip right to that here. Okay, so.
Erin, just for a refresher, that first page, the revenues 24 and 23, just give us the totals and then jump into it.
Oh, sure, absolutely. So the original taxable assessed valuation provided from our certification of values from the assessor was 173, 573,767 dollars this year versus last year, which was 130,853,000. So you can see that the property tax revenue estimated from our original certification would have been 2.7 million, as where last year it was just above 2 million. So that was an increase of 672,000. So if we skip down to the bottom of page three, we can see an update, and this is an estimate. It's likely going to be a little bit less than this, but not by much. There, there's a few other factors that go into play, but the assessor's office was able to pull this together, and they did an awesome job with all this data. So our new taxable assessed valuation estimate would be 164,726,000. So that would equate to a property tax revenue of approximately 2.6 million versus the 2.7 that I had shown you before. So this is a slide showing giving counsel the information to see if counsel wishes to reduce the mill levy or to make any kind of reduction. This is how much it would be. It's approximately 82,000 for each half-mill on the next slide there. And counsel can see, based on this, how much of an increase. So if you look at that last column, that's how much additional revenue the city would bring in if we leave it alone. So if we do nothing, the city would receive an extra 533,000 over last year. And then it would be reduced by 82,000 approximately for every half-mill. Okay, I haven't gone below the two and a half because that's approximately about a 6% increase based on all the inflation that we've had over the last year and a half. I would hope that we don't go below that, but so that this is what I've, I've given counsel, so they have the information. And then on this next slide, I showed this previously before Proposition HH. So essentially, the, each, each home would get approximately about a 50,000 reduction in their total assessed valuation. So the actual valuation, and then it changes just slightly your assessment rate. It goes from 0.0, I'm not even gonna say it because I'm probably gonna mess it up, but it, it just barely, it takes it from four digits to two digits, so it's 0.06 now if this would pass. So on a 520,000, which is what I told counsel was the median income, the median household valuation, I apologize. It would be 470,400, and that, that would equate to an assessed value of 31,516 now. And based on a current example of the mill levy calculation, this would equate to a property tax of 2,561. And if we jump back up to what it was before on the same property, it would be 2,0861. So you can see how this would affect each homeowner and then how it would affect the city. So I'm trying to give all the information here, and then this is what it would do for each property, e, each property owner. So each half-mill would equate to about a $15.76 reduction for the city's portion only.
So Senate Bill 23-303 is referenced on the slides. Is that's what, is that what is bringing Prop HH to the ballot?
It is, yes. Any questions? Micah Kana will be giving a more detailed and more intelligent explanation of all of this at the meeting, but I wanted counsel to have this in advance because I do think there's an expectation of some kind of discussion, so I want you to have all the information. All right, and just a reminder on budget, we will have the budget presentation on October 19th, and the budget packets will be delivered to counsel on October 13th, so that's all I have.
Counsel, any further questions? All right, very good. Thank you, Erin. Move on to reports, and speaking of that meeting, again, it'll be held at 6:00 PM September 27th at the U-Pass Cultural Center. It'll be a special work session regarding the property tax and mill levy. The work session will not include public comment. It is being co-hosted by the Teller County Commissioners and Senator Mark Basely, I think Micah Kana, as you said. They will be there to explain and discuss what Prop HH is and the Senate bill that's bringing it, how it'll impact our mill levies, not just citywide but countywide as well. So the public is welcome to it. Again, there won't be public comment, but you can listen to the discussion and get educated like the rest of us on just what this is and what it means for you as a homeowner and property owner. And then I also have Friday, September 29th. It is the last farmer's market of the season, so come out and enjoy one last time. All the vendors from all over Colorado that provide a variety of products, including Colorado fruits, vegetables, fresh baked bread, honey, coffee, food trucks, and more. And on Thursday, October 5th, from 7:30 AM to 9:30 AM, again at the U-Pass Cultural Center, the Woodland Park Chamber is hosting the Eggs and Issues Breakfast with Colorado Congresswoman Brittany Patterson of Colorado's 7th District. The Congresswoman will share what's happening in DC and how that may affect Teller County. And from our Parks and Rec team, basketball has their late registration open until this Sunday, September 24th, for third and fourth graders co-ed and fifth to eighth grade girls. And hockey registration is open for ages kindergarten through eighth grade co-ed. Let's get those kids signed up. Councilmember Case?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I wanted to make a correction. The last time I reported on PPACG and the C.DOT update, I said that 67 North and the design and the drainage and all of that was next year, and right now, actually, it's just in design. And so it will be out for advertisement for bid next year, so that's the, the plan. Anyway, I didn't want anyone to have expectations that didn't happen, and I just misunderstood and clarified with the C.DOT representative the other day. The Parks and Rec July and August Operations Report and Monthly Report still is, has glowing reviews with the Aquatic Center, January through July, and then January through August, or right around. It was over 70% and right at 70% in August, so that's still just outstanding performance there and lots of punch cards and sales for programs there, and it's just all good news. So thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay, Councilmember Zulawaga?
Yeah, you may recall, a couple of meetings ago, we had an elderly lady come up and speak for three minutes on the condition of our, the beauty of our downtown area. Her name was Ms. Carter. She's actually about 80, did she say 85 or 87? I think she's 87. So she came before Keep Woodland Park Beautiful at our last meeting and shared her passion and her expertise at caring for the gardens downtown, planting flowers. I guess she worked under Sally Riley for a little while, but she actually managed them all. She had her pickup truck. She would plant the flowers and get them watered and all this. It was just great to hear her, and she's concerned that we are not, we're dropping the ball. There's not enough volunteers to get involved in, in keeping our downtown area looking beautiful. So we had the opportunity to share with her some of the things that Keep Woodland Park Beautiful is working on, including working with city engineer in terms of a design for the, the center corridor of 24 and making it, what is the language, hardscaped? Is that what, it's called hardscape, so there won't be any need for dying trees and whatnot, what she was concerned about. But also, we're just looking at, there was, there seems to be a bit of a drop in some of the engagement that Downtown Development Authority did with keeping that area beautiful, along with Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. So we're going to see about re, reawakening that relationship and see if we can get greater dollars in, involved and greater engagement from citizens who want to plant flowers. We're looking at not zero scape, but less, you know, more friendly, that they don't require so much water in the city. I guess is happy to do the watering, but we, we, we really have missed the ball this last couple of years. And so citizens have told us, they came in, she gave us great input. She says she will act as a consultant, however, she's not able to go out and actually dig the beds anymore because of things happening with her at. because of things happening with her at her tender age. So that's really all, and we're going to meet with Ben here coming up to finalize some things that are, he's wanting to put in the budget. So that's all, thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Nikai?
All right, so I actually have three things. So first, Jeff, where are we on the IGA?
I sent a note to the attorney for the school district on August 14th, inviting the school district to meet with this council on either the either of the meetings this month, September 7th or September 21st. I've heard nothing substantive in response.
I've sent a request to the president and have not received any response either.
Well, that's unfortunate. All right, so then I wanted to clarify my vote on 1459. I didn't agree with all of it, but I did think we should have at least gone to public hearing to discuss it and then decide what to do with it at that point. Which, that's just why I did what I did. And then lastly, I would like to congratulate the citizens on their successful petitioning.
Councilmember Connors?
Thank you, Mayor. This past Tuesday, the State Historic Preservation Hall came down here to our city and did a presentation on the different levels of grants and historic designations. We had some really good attendance from our citizens and from the Historic Preservation Committee. So I'd like to thank everybody who attended. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Harvey. Councilmember Neil?
I have nothing, thank you.
City Attorney? All right. City Manager?
Nothing for me.
All right, with that, this meeting is adjourned, and I'm going to do a 10-minute break, and we will return to do a work session regarding items to be put on special election ballot.